Transferable skills that I think transfer well to the city council. These skills include reviewing and writing policy, contributing thoughtful discussion and questions, and collaboration with the rest of the members of my team, preparing in advance of meetings and researching the packets thoroughly, reviewing budgets, assessing programs for efficacy, planning and executing projects and events, persuasive writing skills, and liaison skills between organizations and communities. Now that I'm becoming more involved locally and here in Roy, these skills combined with my passion for my city and the issues that affect us will, I think, make me an asset on the city council. Until I'm elected, I will continue to serve in these capacities with 100%, just like I have been right now, but I look forward to the day when I can focus all my energies in Roy City. Thank you, Randy.
Well, first and foremost, thank you to the lead, each and every one of you, for your due diligence in trying to go through and educate the general population, so I do sincerely appreciate all of your efforts. My name is Randy R. Skadden. I am a current sitting city council member. I actually am occupying the current four-year term that is actually also up for reelection. I opted to actually choose the two-year because my wife and I, of almost 10 years, have unsuccessfully tried to have our own child. We've gone through multiple rounds of IVF treatments, and we are now just legitimately, you know, waiting for a call because our fertility doctor legitimately just said, you know, right to our face, "I absolutely love taking your money, but you statistically have like a 3% chance of getting just a successful egg." So my wife and I are legitimately waiting any day now to get a call from the Utah Fertility Center and from our donor, and at that point in time, two years down the road, I will actually be a new father. Now, that's not to say I'm not very intimately involved with, you know, the youth. I do have three children from my previous marriage. Interestingly enough, my oldest son is 21. He's autistic and developmentally delayed. I've got a 19-year-old daughter who just recently remarried, or excuse me, married, not remarried. And then my youngest child will be 17 at the end of September. I want to continue to serve Roy City in terms of just different various general capacities and what I have been doing. I am a product of Roy. I went to Roy Elementary. I went to Roy Junior High. I went to Roy High School, the class of 1998, and I have a good purview in terms of where I have seen Roy been and where I want to see it go. When you talk about as an example the 5600 South Project, I remember when that road was completely and totally shut down as opposed to where we're at today with the current project, where they're only going to be taken and shutting it down overnight. So I have legitimately seen much change in Roy, and I want to continue to be the catalyst of driving Roy progressively into the future. Thank you.
Okay, we'll start with Ty this time. What kinds of things do you believe could be done to make sure you have the tax base to be able to fund the things that happen in Roy?
Yeah, first thing we gotta do is we gotta look at the budget and see what those wants and needs are and understand what they are. We have to be able to have the data. One of the things that I am constantly looking at is, I've been looking at the year from 2018 to now and seeing that we've had a major increase in just the rent and parks from $2 million to $3 million, and I don't have a full clear understanding at this point of the data where the salaries are coming out of different ledger, out of the itemized line items of the accounting process and where that comes from. So I think the people need to understand where that's coming from because once they understand where everything's coming from... Oh, am I done? Oh, sorry. And so we have to make sure that the funds are being utilized correctly so that we can then say, "These are the things that we can make the expenditures on versus the things that need to be cut."
Thank you. I think one of the biggest things that I think we need to tap into a little bit more would be sales tax. Now, it's a hard thing because there's not a lot of land up for grabs left in Roy City. A lot of it is developed out, and so I think that the little land that is left that may be available, parcels that are available that maybe businesses are looking at, we need to, I think, have people in office who can be good liaisons between the city and them so that we can show them that we do want them here as a city, so that we can create attractive proposals for businesses who are interested in coming to the city and make sure that they know that we want them here. I've heard a couple of stories, and where I grew up as well, of residents driving out businesses just because they threw such a fit, and I think it's hard to know where to place them, but I think that that's important for us to make sure that it's clear from the elected officials that we are willing to work with them and we want them here for whatever fits their business model. Another solution I think can be implemented, I've already seen and heard talk of, which is an example of if you have multi-story buildings, to take a couple of those where the density is stacked, locating that first floor, I think, is an excellent idea because that's an opportunity to say, "Here is a multifunctioning parcel that can also be used as commercial," and you can get a little bit of tax revenue that way. So where a lot of the land is built out, I think that's a creative solution as well.
Yes. So the main question was, how do we go through and actually increase, you know, revenue into the city? And let's just fundamentally, real quickly, just delineate between how the city predominantly sees the income that comes into it: property taxes and sales taxes. If you look at the sheer math aspect of how to bring revenue into the city, the only revenue that the city can take and guarantee is on property taxes. Now, the way that the math works is roughly on average, every household turns around and generates $300 in property tax. So if we have 100 households and 100 new rooftops that actually come into Roy City, that equates to $30,000 just in property tax. If each of those additional properties turn around and generate $2,000 in additional, like, sales tax revenue, you're talking another, again, if it's 100, that's another $200,000. So we are roughly at $230,000 in revenue increase that we take and actually see into the city for each 100 lot of households that actually come into the actual city. And again, it's property taxes.
You have to go on, because this mind is crazy. Yes?
Okay, so what I'd like to see happen in Roy City is that, I think, the way you need to work really well with the developers, and what I'd like to also see, I think, a really good way to source of income and revenue that we can have that takes on the burden of our taxpayers is a, as a small hotel, not a 10-story hotel, but it's very small, a hotel that is acceptable to the citizens as well as the people in Roy City and its management also, and also to have a really nice sit-down restaurant so we don't have to send our people that come to that hotel to another city to spend their money. Let's leave them here to spend their money. And I also agree if Alexis is out and typing mixed properties to where we have little businesses underneath and apartments up top, but not towards a tunnel vision where it's all the way down the street, and I believe that would be a really good source of taking advantage of the little space we have in Roy City.
Okay. What is your view about keeping the Roy complex functioning? What is your view, Alexis?
Sorry, that's hard to turn on. What is my view about keeping it functioning? I like the place, so I do like that it's there. I think one of the biggest concerns it has been is that it's been operating in the red, and that's been hard to keep it going. I'm not under any illusions that costs for services like that, the chemicals that it takes, the people to staff it, that I'm not under any illusions that the city somehow gets a break on that. So it's really, I think, all part of a larger question, which is the question of the budget. If you intend to pay for services, then you need to have the money to pay for them. And so the question is going to be is checking with residents and seeing. It's been clear that residents do like the complex because of the people that came out when it was compromised. And so I think this really is part of an overarching theme, which is that if that's going to be something that we're going to pay for, then we're gonna have to find the money to pay for it, and if not, that's a balance.
So my perspective on the complex, as the one and only lone dissenting voice who voted initially against the funds to go through and repair it, I am adamantly on the record to say that by all standard accounting principles, it is not, if it was a standalone business, it wouldn't be operating. But what we overwhelmingly heard from the broad general public when we were going through that was that regardless of what it cost, the voices in that room effectively told us writ large that they would like to see the complex still be in existence. So I did initially vote against the actual funding, but then I did again after, interestingly enough, working with Ramp and getting different various grants. I went ahead and I voted right directly in favor unanimously with the rest of the council. And so, again, it's one of those, from a purely accounting principles perspective, it's a liability, but from a intrinsic value to the broader, like, community, it is actually, you know, a treasured asset. So, I mean, that's my perspective.
I am totally for the Roy complex. And I first, like, three, four years ago, it's kind of like, oh, we, it's kind of a deficit, it's a very large expense, but as I talk to more citizens in the community, especially the elderly citizens that have been in this city from day one, in my opinion is, we need to take care of those people. They've invested their whole life in this city, and I believe that they deserve to have the complex because they are very, they love that place and they get people from other places, and I don't know anything in Roy City that is a cash-making base. There's nothing in Roy City that makes money. Roy Rec doesn't make money, neither do the parks and recreation, neither does Aquatics Center, so I feel that that complex needs to stay because the citizens want it.
So from a business perspective, owning an apartment complex and renting multiple businesses, that I've sold and then being an investor, you have to understand where the accounting comes from, and we have to look at why we've been in the red, never been in the black with the Roy complex. Where is the expenditure coming from? How are we gonna make the money up for that? Well, we can ask for other cities to help pay for that. Maybe we can get banners to go in there to help, from businesses, to put their banners in there and have advertising, and they help pay for it. Maybe we put a bubble over the Aquatics Center so that that can be open 24/7, not three months of the year. There's options that we can do. Otherwise, the only option we have is to shut it down because it doesn't make business sense. We're not a business. We should be collecting the taxes, not renting a business. But I don't want to do away with it because many people want it. I want to hear what they say. That is my opinion, and that's what we gotta find out, and we gotta do it together.
Okay. What do you... Do you have any ideas on how to encourage citizen participation in some of the decisions made for the city? Typically, you don't get a good turnout at council meetings. How are you going to make sure that you're representing the people?
Go start.
Darren, oh, just Randy, start.
Can you read that together, Darren? What was the question? He can't hear.
Okay. What kind of things do you have in your mind, creating things to be able to bring citizens in to continue to contribute to the community and to learn about some of the things that are going on? Talking about taxes, you've got to explain that to people. How do you prepare or what do you think you can do to get those people in?
As a current city council, sitting city council member, it is incredibly hard to get public involvement. In fact, there are more people in this room right now than I have seen in the vast majority of city council meetings. We do, as a city and we do as elected officials, need to do better with getting out there and promoting across any and all different avenues to try to, you know, get citizens to become engaged. A lot of that can be done with modern, you know, social media posts, which we do that quite effectively, but I think we, as council members and even just broad citizens within the community, need to become more involved and engaged in making sure that our neighbors, our friends, and everyone are aware of what's actually, you know, transpiring and going on in the city. Because a lot of the times, it's just sitting down and trying to have a conversation with somebody, and when I do that, nine times out of 10, we can come to consensus and understanding, and that's, communication is key and critical.
I believe similar to what Randy says, I believe that involvement in the city and understanding, because I'm learning more and more about the whole taxes and how it all works and all that, how we get our money, and there are certain things we can and can't do to get taxes and revenue, and I believe if we work with the developers that do come in, I think that the citizens need to be totally aware, pretty transparent of what's going on and what we're heading towards and what we're trying to accomplish and what we're gonna gain out of that, what positives and what revenue we're gonna get out of these particular developments instead of just not them knowing and kind of like, and all of a sudden we have a meeting and it's posted, and they say, "Well, I didn't know about this," but I think, like you said, social media involvement, getting community involved so they understand what we've done and what we're trying to do to help the city.
We have to look at what other cities are doing. Clinton City actually has an intern that's going around and educating people on social media and other platforms. Why aren't we not doing the same? As a business owner that created a great room escape in Lake Utah, I didn't come to Roy because they pushed me out. They thought I was gonna be prime with an escape room. I sold that company after it was successful, still running in Lake, and it does very well. Part of the trip, the part of the view was looking at the highway and what was the most traffic coming out of I-15. That's why we chose Lake Utah. Now we've grown that business. After it's sold, they are doing very successful. I know how to run a business, and this is something that we need to do. We need to involve the community, and we have to make it fun, and we have to be able to do the right thing that helps the residents first. The developers are in control. We need to be in control and tell them what is good for the residents, that brings the tax money and helps them be successful. And that's what we need to do, is support the current businesses we have here today that will encourage other businesses to come in.
According to the question of how to get a better public engagement, I would say that when you see voter turnout versus how many people are in council meetings, you can see that more people are voting than are in council meetings. So those people do want varying degrees of information, and they get their information with various avenues. So I think as well as we can match people's preferences to get their information, if it's online, if it's social media, if it's the snippets in the newsletter that they read, which are good updates, and other ways to get a hold of people, maybe trying to get the big picture or the spark note, if you will, version of what things are going on out there because more people can digest that because you can see how many people vote versus how many are there for an entire council meeting. Those people are still informed and they want to be involved, but they may not, they may not invest as much time as we would like to see them engaging, but we can still give them a Reader's Digest version, I guess, if you will, so that they can still be involved to the degree that they want to.
Okay. This is for every person, every city in the whole Weber County. What about the high-density housing with the high rises, 10 stories? What kinds of things could you do to meet the state requirement to have high density?
I believe in the high density. I believe, I'm not sure what the requirement is and how many high-density units we have to have, but I believe the high-density units, I believe, I like, I like the idea of having shops underneath, and if we gotta create a little more high-density, let's put them on top of some of the shops on the Main Street and also on the high-density. I believe we need to maybe change some of the enforcement codes and maybe in the codes of the city to keep it nice, to maybe restrict those people that are renting these places out to make it a little stricter, a little tighter, that they maintain their properties in a much better way so as people see these properties, they don't think they're just a rundown, nothing. And I think that that's part of our problem, and we don't have very good, sometimes, anyway. I'm sorry. Oh, and I think that that would help to have them stricter than the enforcement on those people that rent properties.
High-density housing, that's another area where we need to talk to the residents and see where they want this to be and if they want this to occur. We also have to look at the international code that's involved with this because with the square footage and going 10 stories, that's impossible to do right now in the place that they approved to do it. Why vote for it then if you can't do it? We also have to look at the parking. We have to look at the way the businesses underneath are going to get deliveries from us in my truck that won't be getting there, let alone where are they gonna put the waste that they're not even accounting for? And the snow removal, we're gonna push that on 1900. We have issues, and we need to understand where is that gonna be and how we're going to take care of that so that businesses can thrive with the residents that are gonna be here that are gonna do the shopping, and we have to maintain the businesses we already currently have.
I think I first need to make clear my position on high-density housing, and I think it just kind of is wrapped up into renters. When I first got married and my husband was in graduate school and I was raising my oldest son, we couldn't afford to buy a house. That's not how my parents did it because they could afford to buy a house a little sooner than we could, but things are not the same as they used to be. So we rented for eight years, and I'm okay to say that. And I know that some people, even by choice now, will rent because that's what they want to do. And so first I want it to be clear that I see high-density housing or apartments as homes for families where people live. The second thing that I want to mention about that is that how we go about meeting state requirements is by smart planning and putting those high-density locations in places that make sense near major exit quarters for the city and public transportation because of the car, the number of cars that people have in those locations usually is not what people have in single-family homes. So those locations make sense. I also think we should be prepared with the proper infrastructure plans in place before that.
So this is an interesting one, and I echo a lot of the same sentiments as Alexis is. Having, you know, lived in a high-density housing situation for a number of years before my family and I were able to afford to buy a home, so again, let's just, you know, level set and say that high-density housing is housing fundamentally at the end of the day. Having been in multiple decisions as it relates to, like, land use in 10 stories, to Ty's point as well, we wanted to, as a council and as a city, signal to developers that, hey, we are interested and we want to see, you know, large-scale development come and come into our city because right now, if you look through our downtown core or a comparison of a lot of our peers, it's blighted. And so the notion of the 10 stories was to signal to developers that, hey, we are interested and we want to see what vision you can actually bring to our great city of Roy.
Okay. Oh, there it is. Okay. Ty, if you were forced to cut something from the city's budget, what would it be and why?
Well, again, we have to look at the data, but the data is really pointing towards the Roy complex and how it's been in the red. Secondly, it's a possibility, a possibility, a potential of the employees and the amount of employees that we have, whether it's part-time or full-time. If we cut some of the full-time into part-time, then there's a lot of benefit savings from the benefits that they acquire from that that we can save from. Do I want to do that? No, but it is a hard decision. I have no problem doing that. I run many businesses, and you have to know where you have to cut and where you have to spend and how you make the business run and you get it back in the black. We're running in the red, and that's why everybody's saying high-density, that's why they're saying businesses. We have to do more than just increase the property taxes. 28% is unacceptable.
So to the initial question, what would I cut? I would cut nothing alone because if I were on the council, I'd be one vote, but here's what, some things that I would have some discussion about. This is an idea, so this is an example of something that I could consider cutting or could consider talking about, okay? And it's not the only thing, but it's an idea of one thing. And that would be to have a discussion about the Roy City Rec football program because there is now a rec football program in the area that is similar, and that's the reason that, you know, Roy City doesn't have their own soccer program because AYSO's in the area. There's now a football program here, and so that is an area that you could consider cutting. It also may benefit a little bit because that is a program that's only accessible to a certain demographic and not all Roy City residents, and so if there is another available program that is similar, that's comparable for that same demographic, you would be able to save the out-large population tax dollars that are only really benefiting that demographic, but they can still find their program elsewhere. And that's just one example.
So interestingly enough, I also agree with Ty that the low-hanging fruit and opportunity would be to cut the complex. And again, that is just strictly by accounting standards and principles. I do disagree from, like, an employee perspective. Part-time employees don't receive benefits, they're just wages, and we, as a council, went through last year, and we cut 7.5% from the budget. That included up to additional ammo for our police officers. Interestingly enough, our police officers just this last year were in a major shootout, and fortunately, at that particular time, they were, you know, adequately trained, but since that time, they have not been able to, you know, increase their marksmanship skills, and the demands on our police and fire are second to none. And so, you know, to go through and say wholesale that we would want to look at, like, different various staffing positions, we are minimally staffed pretty much broadly across the board, and if it were any other, you know, corporation or entity, we would actually add additional headcount, not less.
Okay. First of all, I definitely wouldn't cut the complex. That's an easy target to reduce taxes, and I don't like that. Too many citizens like that, and they use it for their health, and to see that go would be awful. I think there's some people in the city that are in the upper management part of Roy City that's there that have vehicles and allowances that they get every month from Roy City, and I don't believe they need to be paid for. They could be like any other person. I understand a fire and police in certain departments need a vehicle, I'm okay with that. I'm not okay with those other people getting allowances for cars. Why do they, there's cars sitting in Roy City that are vacant that are not being used. They can use those cars, they're already bought and paid for by the city. Why do we need to give them money? I would start there.
Okay, Alexis. How would you utilize your general plan, and have you reviewed that on a yearly basis?
You say how to utilize it? I have not reviewed it on a yearly basis. That's an excellent tip. I think that is something that's a very good starting point, and it has projected as much as it can from where, from when it was written to see what is going to happen in the future. Obviously, that can't be said perfectly, and so it couldn't be expected to be perfect, but I think it's a great consulting tool to look and say, now, what was planned and why? And then you can look back on it and say, now, moving forward, do we go on with this? Do we deviate and why? Why is always a really important question. So I think that's, that's how I'd answer.
So on my time on the city council, I actually, for the first time in over 20 years, was part of the city council that went through and actually updated the general plan. The interesting thing with the general plan is it's a living, breathing document that can and should be looked at for whatever the current market demands are for whatever is looking to be developed. We're also, you know, from a state perspective, we have the general plan, and then we have different various economic opportunity zones and different areas within the city that we're required to take and actually develop out. Case in point, the stationary plan down by the track station, that is the area with which we are going to see the most growth, hopefully here, over the next three, five to 10 years, because we are, you know, by the state, by state law, we're required to have a stationary plan and set the vision for what we want that area to take and be developed as. And so, you know, the general plan should be something that we should all be going through and reviewing and updating as, you know, things change.
How do you feel about the use of the general plan and being reviewed once a year?
I think, I think the general plan, the city ought to be reviewed every year, and I believe that there ought to be information out there of what we're reviewing and why we're reviewing it. Like you said, you get the updates on the, on different things in the city, and the general plan, I think, has to, I think there's a lot of information that's not put out there, and I think that, like you said, the social media is a good way to do it, and I know the newsletter is good, but some people don't really look at them or read them, and I think that those people need to come and get more involved. We need to figure out a way to get people involved, the city council, and come to those meetings, and they start discussing these reviews and those things about the city that's going on in the city, and I believe it'd be a good start to begin the meetings.
So we can learn from Clinton City that they have the intern that's out educating. We can also look at what I'm proposing is to have multiple meetings so we can discuss this together. The general plan is there, it's supposed to be something for the residents, and if we're going to fill those locations, we gotta look at the general plan and understand why are we gonna spot-check it, why are we gonna change it? We need to understand the data. Let's gather the data, let's understand that so that everybody is not divided. Right now, we have a city that's very divided on high-density and not growing, and if we're going to grow, let's do it according to the general plan, let's understand why we're gonna change it, just not say that because it's affordable living, which it's not, $400,000 townhomes, it's not that. We have to get down into a different bracket for it to be affordable, and some of the things that I'm hearing is $4,000 rent is not affordable in these apartment complexes. So we gotta figure that out. We gotta bring that down.
Okay. Now, we'll start with Randy, right? Somebody needs to check my work, you know? Tell us what your definition of transparency is and how it should play a role in your position on the city council.
Sure. One of the things that I pride myself on is like brutal transparency. My, one of my operating mantras, especially as it relates to engagement and interaction with any of the city staff, is from a transparency perspective, I will never, ever blindside them with something in a public meeting that I had not discussed with them prior. So that way, they can come with an informed decision. Plus, on top of that, all anybody has to do is ask me. Ask me. You can call me. You can text me. You can message me on Facebook. I mean, I am one of the most readily available individuals you will ever meet. I will legitimately, if I am on the other side of the planet, I will join and get back to you. One of the things that I, you know, pride myself on is the fact that I am horribly overly transparent and will answer any question that you actually have and give you a straight answer, a straight and honest answer. This is my mantra as far as transparency is concerned.
My type of transparency would be anything that is brought up into the city that we get it out there in the city. There's sometimes there's things that are brought up that are pretty grary. And I think, I've been asked some questions, different things just recently about the different things in the city. And there's not a lot of information there sometimes. And I've asked the city of some different information just recently, get into this stuff about some of the benefits and the packages that the city has. And I haven't been, it hasn't been real transparent to me personally to get that information. I think that information is kind of pertinent. It kind of compares salaries and benefits that we have here in the city. And I can't get that information. I'd really like to get it, and I don't know where to go to get it. And if I ask, I think there's some transparency there and some information that should be given to me or anybody else in the city who wants those kind of things. They're kind of, they might be kind of off limits, sort of, but they shouldn't be because we, the citizens, are paying their taxes and their wages and their salaries and benefits.
Again, the transparency is totally multiple meetings. There's not the five o'clock Tuesday meeting of every other week. We got to get the information submitted out there. We got to have maybe an intern that does that. Maybe we get from Roy High to do that. We give them some incentives for getting that information out. Secondly, I was reviewing just a bunch of information from last night's Meet the Candidates. I've talked to about 15 people. I sent out 30 emails because they requested the package that we had on the budget as they were trying to understand that. We have to be able to communicate with the people and let them understand where things are at and why. We have to understand that data. We have to have the transparency in front of them. And we're not doing that. That's why we have such a good race going on right now. So many people are running because they're saying we're blindsided. I helped start the referendum. We needed a pause so we could understand why are we building up when we can't do that according to international code? Period.
One thing I think that we need to be aware of is that not a lot of people come seeking information. And so one thing that we need to be proactive about is taking that information to them. I think that, I mean, honestly, me as a person, as a candidate, I have made myself available, like Randy said. I'm available for any input and any collaboration. As a matter of fact, I love collaboration. Talking to the candidates last night, I met a wonderful resident who said, oh, yeah, I have all these ideas. And I said, well, then, do you talk to the council about them? And he said, yes. Perfect. Because the more hints we can get on an issue, the better. So that's, I mean, transparency is important to me because of the collaboration and because it's the role of government to show projected plans and report the plans and seek inputs from residents. I just also want to read this straight from my website. Integrity in government also means transparency. Quorums are to remain publicly accessible, not private. Any, a couple of council members sit together chatting, discussing an issue that constitutes a quorum is not legal.
How do you see your role working with the other city council members and your mayor?
How do I see my role, sitting here? I see my role with the mayor and the other city council members. I see his role as an opportunity to have, we may have disagreements that we have on different situations and different things that are going on, the changes and different policies, different things want to change. But I believe I have the ability to be able to work with all of them and have a discussion, even though we don't all agree on something, I think we could come to a solution to the problems we have. And I believe it's very important that if you, you have to have that trust and you have to have that communication between the mayor and the other people you work with. You have to have that.
Again, we're going to go back to the data. The data is where we have to stand. We have to talk beyond the feeling. When we go on feelings, we make mistakes. We got to look at the data and go driven by the data. Now, the city council passed something the other night that I was pretty much in disagreement with, but they went with the feelings, and I almost have to agree with it. They changed the ordinance to allow somebody not to have to basically restructure their home, which was going to cost them hundreds of thousands of dollars. I understand that. I get that. But now, it makes an opportunity for many people to grow and maybe bring their children and to their homes to live because they expand and have that extra space. There's lots of things that we have to talk to the city council and understand that, but we have to understand the data and not the feelings.
Can you read the question again? I'm sorry.
What is your definition of transparency?
Oh, sorry. That was just the last one.
Oh, I lost my mind there for a minute. What do you feel like your role is as a city council member, working with the public and working with mayor?
I see, I would see myself as one person on a team that is working together to do research and get information from residents and from community partners and from projects that have been designed to collect information and do studies, and then bringing all of that together in a giant, in a giant collaboration and sharing of ideas and voices that come from a network that has such outreach to the public. So it's all of those things that are all coming together and then discussed here at large. And again, my role, I would see as a member of that team, working collaboratively, working respectfully and diplomatically with the others that are there and being able to shake pens at the end of the night. And even if we don't, we don't vote the same, and if we don't hang out, we can still work together. And that's, that's something that's been really important to me and something I've learned in politics.
Okay, so we'll start with Alexis. Does that ring?
No, I didn't. I didn't. All right. Thanks, Terry. And so just to quickly define, a quorum, according to the state of Utah, is three or more council members. And so the mayor's role should be to bring himself, or then herself, with two additional council members and go through and workshop out different various ideas. As long as there's not three council members, you know, together in one setting, that's not considered a quorum. Some of the best discussions that I've had has been when I had been sitting across from other city council members, and we were just going through and spitballing different various ideas. And interestingly enough, some of the best ideas that we've actually had came from those types of sessions. And so to have those types of discussions and interactions, both with the mayor on a, you know, one-to-one basis and the mayor on a one-to-two basis with the two different council members, is allowed under state law. And I think we could turn around and have better ideas to bring to bear.
Let's see if I'm on the page now, okay? What is your opinion of ADU accessory dwelling units? And would that help to meet the density problems?
Yeah, at first, I was not exactly for it and haven't been really for that because people bought their property to keep it as is. But because the governor in the state of Utah has remained a mandate on that, now we need to update our ordinances to match that. Otherwise, I think the governor's going to take that away and just do it anyways. And then what's the point of a planning commission? And what's the point of the city council even having an option to vote on that? So we have to take action on it. And right now, our ordinances do not match what the needs are and what the requirements are and the fact that there are people that are in need of that.
And to that point, I think, obviously, I don't think that anyone's going to disagree that we need to be in compliance. Obviously, this isn't an issue that I know a lot about. And so if this were, if this were a meeting today, I would be listening to the input that I'm hearing from the other council members. And I would be, if we, if I'm not able to get enough today, what I would, what I would propose is motion to table this, discussions about this until I have further information.
So being on the council and having, you know, gotten to alignment, performance, statutory requirements of the state as it relates to ADUs and Roy, I like Ty. Like I said, I bought my house, and my intent was never to have my children live in the basement. I didn't want to put a mini-house in my backyard. But we are adhering to what has been, for lack of a better term, dictated to us by the state. And so with that case in point, I've got a third car garage. With how, you know, ADU requirements are written in Roy, I could actually take and convert my current third car garage into an accessory dwelling unit. Do I want to do that? No. But I do believe in people's right to do what they want with their property. And so from that perspective, I'm very libertarian. And, you know, if people want to build small homes in their backyard to house their, you know, friends, family, kudos to them. And again, I think we're going to be, to Ty's point, we're going to be forced down that path here sooner probably rather than later.
I kind of, I, I'm kind of along with these guys. Sometimes some of the state in Utah's kind of stepped in. So we kind of, we're kind of at their mercy at a point. But I believe the opportunity, I talked to a lady the other night that about this very thing, she had a disabled daughter. That's very rare. Probably she'd like to keep that daughter in that property. I feel some kind of, that she's doing something of importance. And I feel that it's a case-by-case situation on some of those things. And I believe it's probably a good thing for some of those situations like that. And I believe we got to be really careful how we work that. And I think we got to work with the state on that and try to figure out some ordinances that doesn't get out of control to where we don't have problems with that particular issue on the single dwellings on something, another, on the same property, another dwelling. So that's what I'd say about that.
What are your plans to ensure both residents and developers are involved in any new development plans for the city?
I think it's important to understand the, that there can be input given from residents. And then I think it's also very important to understand property rights. And so one thing that can't be owned is a view. That's not something that somebody can own. So I think that we can get input from people where developments may surround, and we can see what, we can get the input, we can see what the feels are. And then I think that if we work strategically with developers to, I guess, have them maybe make a little bit more, do a little bit more for the city in their development, we can kind of, I don't want to say make deals. It's not underhanded deals, but we can, we can make compromises with them so that it will cost us less. It's not a well-poped.
So interestingly enough, one of the most fulfilling things I think I've done as a council member is when we actually had an open house with a developer down at Bridge Elementary for a development that the developer actually took and put in. We had everybody from the surrounding community come in. The developer took it and asked questions. We, as a council, were able to engage and interact in an open forum with the developer as well as with the broad general public. And I think that was very, very fruitful. And ideally, you know, I think that's kind of a little bit of the gold standard as it relates to, you know, different various developers. We don't have, you know, we do have upcoming developments that are going to be out there. And we do, as a, you know, city, we're required to go through and notify, you know, property owners that the development is coming. And so again, just doing more of that broad community outreach, working hand-in-hand with the developer. So that way, you know, the residents that the development is going to be coming into, they can actually, you know, have a one-on-one human discussion.
I believe on the developers, I believe that we need to get the, like, there's people that complain about certain developments in their neighborhood or their area. And I believe there needs to be a little more, a little more footwork and a little more help between the developers and those people that are going to have those properties developed in their neighborhoods or those areas. I think they need to be more understanding to those people that have lived there for years and have a developer coming. But I think also we need to have the developers. It's kind of got to work both ways. We need to have the developers work with the citizens in those areas and the city council so we all come to an agreement. We all feel pretty good about the development because the development will help the revenue of Roy City. We need to have more revenue. And that's one we got to do. We have to have development. We need to do a little more, a little more understanding about the people in the neighborhood or area.
Again, my platform is to have multiple meetings. That would be bringing everybody together. Secondly, I'm for property rights first. It's about the residents, not the developer. If the developer's coming in and making a plan that doesn't make sense and it doesn't, it's not realistic. Let's be realistic about what we're doing and let's make sure everybody's on board. Let's get the information out there. That's part of the transparency we don't have. Like Randy said, it's bringing people into a meeting and talking about, again, the needs versus the wants. Let's understand why the development's going to take place and how are we going to get a revenue out of that? Where's the value at? I want to understand the value at. If there's no value at, then I go with the residents. And I'm going to support the residents first.
Okay. What do you consider to be the top three issues present in Roy?
So first and foremost is employer retention. Second is, again, getting out there and more broadly communicating and educating the population. And third, I would probably say is figuring out how to get the complex so it's more ingrained as, even, because again, we talked about how the older generation likes it. I want to see like it used as a potential youth center. Maybe not necessarily in competition, say, with the Boys and Girls Club. But I know every year, the Boys and Girls Club has more people or more kids turn around and put in to go there than they're actually able to take on. So, I mean, why don't we take and, you know, look to see how we as a, you know, city can take and leverage the resources that we have to actually make the amenities that we're taking and providing more ingrained within the actual community?
The top three things in the city, right, that concerns me, the top, the top three things I believe that is on most people's minds that I always ask mostly is the every increasing large tax increases every year to where we have to have, we have to have a solution to, have to come to some kind of long-term solution. I think sometimes our solutions need to be in place. We don't, sometimes I don't feel we have those. I think that would be one of the things, that would be one of my things in the top priority. And I also would like to see us continue to work with the developers because we have to take, we've got a very wise of the small amount of space that we do have left in Roy City. We have to turn it into some kind of revenue so our citizens don't have to burden the taxes. And the other one is also to continue to keep the city clean and nice and to either update or change the ordinances or enforce the ordinances already on the books to keep our city clean so people can say this is a nice place to come to.
First and foremost for the city and the residents is the safety and wellness of their city. Police and fire department's going to come first. They have to get what they are needed and required to have. That's just, that's just a requirement. We have to protect them. They are what keeps the residents safe. And when the residents are safe, the businesses will come. The businesses aren't coming because we don't look good. And we have developers that aren't coming. I know this because as an investor, there are businesses that are running over to Clinton and the sunset instead of coming to Roy. One, because they've got the space to build because they don't want to be under apartment complexes. And talking to these investors, they want to come here. But then we have a particular persona that's in there that's not bringing the business in. He wants to hold the city hostage so that we don't have the tax revenue coming in because he wants the taxes to help him.
The three biggest issues, I think, facing, that Roy's facing at this time, within Roy City's jurisdiction to control are the budget, which includes many things. Obviously, we've been hashing that all night long. But I think that that can be approached with creative and balanced solutions instead of just one, one solution instead of depending to other avenues. And of course, prioritizing public safety. I think we're all pretty much in agreement there. We need to pick them appropriately, and we need to keep them around. Second, I think we could do a little better in the area of public engagement. And thirdly, I think strategic economic development is something that needs to be addressed as well.
Okay, thank you. Now you have a minute and a half to tell us how wonderful you are and why we should vote for you, starting with Eric. and why we should vote for you, starting with Darren.
I think you have me here. First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for putting this on. We have to come here to kind of expose us and kind of people understand who we are and what we stand for. I am looking forward to, if I do, to make city council, to make some changes in Roy City and to continue to make it a better place to live for myself and my, my family. And I also agree, I think that we do, like, like Ty said about our police and fire department, I think we need to really figure out a way to keep those people happy in our city. And I think there's ways we can do it. That continue to raise our double-digit income tax, our tax increases. I think we can figure out a way to do that if we, if we work on some solutions and we talk about things in the city and the council. I think there's things we can do that may upset a few people and make them a little unhappy. But it's not going to affect our police and fire. And we can keep those people here in our city and not lose those people, like you said, that we really do need to have. And again, I'm thankful for you guys for showing up. Those of you who show up here tonight, it is a kind of offer to come and spark a controversialist thing. But thank you for coming and thank you for putting it on.
Again, we talk about transparency and having individuals involved and how do we do that? Secondly, we have the sec, the safety and soundness of our city and how we're going to provide for our police. One of us is talking to Salt Lake City County and wondering why they keep increasing theirs, making everybody else have to go up. The COLA doesn't work. We're going to have to move away from that. That's just the way it is. But we've got to take care of this and we've got to be communicating with other cities and seeing what they're doing and collaborating with them so that we can take control of this and make the affordable living for them as well. It's not there. And we've got to be able to communicate with the cities and see what they're doing. Do you realize that there's a city down in Saratoga Springs that they're having a decrease because they did some significant things that we're not doing? We can learn from them. We've got to be looking at that and saying, how do we decrease instead of the 20%, 28% increase? I run businesses. I know how to make things work and be successful at it.
Well, I hope it's been evident for my campaign that I'm going to go get it. If I mean something, I'm going to go for it. And I'm serious about this. I'm a learner, a fast learner. I'm a researcher. I enjoy researching. I enjoy writing and I enjoy solving problems. I'm also incredibly teachable and coachable and I am welcoming so much input right now and it's wonderful. I'm already living a lifestyle. I understand that city council is a lifestyle. I've, I've been around a city council or two in my life. And I, and I don't pretend to know everything that it, that it takes. But I do know that it is, and that it's a commitment. And I'm not afraid of that. And I'm already living a lifestyle where I have, as, as you remember from my, my introduction, where I am holding positions and I am donating a lot of my time right now just to be involved because I like it, just because I like it right now and for no other reason. So I, I'm ready to hit the ground running. I'm not running on change. I'm running on merit. I'm not mad at anybody. I'm not mad at anything. I'm not trying to fix everything that's wrong. I like living here in Roy. This is where my home is now and I'm proud of that. And I, I want to, I think I have something to offer the city. I have skills and experiences that I think will benefit the city. And I, I represent a demographic that I think is important to consider as well. With that, I think that we all deserve a little bit of respect here for putting ourselves literally in the spotlight. This is something that is, is difficult to do, is running a campaign and saying, this is me and here's everything about me. And people will investigate you and I think kudos to us. And also thank you to the League for putting this on, for those in attendance here. And thank you for those who are viewing it afterward.
Again, Lee, thank you so much for putting this on. Darren, Ty, Alexis, also thank you for putting yourself out there. And just in closing, as you are current sitting city council member, please, 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 if you have any questions, reach out. There were multiple things that were said across here that, again, you don't have a whole lot of time in a one-minute window to go through and clarify. If you have any questions from a pure transparency perspective, reach out to me. Call me, 801-923-TACO. 8226, it actually spells Taco. It's been a long type number of mine that I've had. Is it really? Hey, small world. Or if we're not friends on Facebook, friend me on Facebook. Call me, text me, email me. Get in contact with me. Let me be your advocate for what is going on in the city. And if re-elected, I will still continue to be that way. And then fundamentally, lastly, at the end of the day, regardless, win, lose or draw, every one of us that's up here on this stand, we're going to either be representing each other. I'm either going to be representing Darren, I'm going to be representing Ty, I'm going to be representing Alexis, or vice versa. So make sure that the lines of communication are always open amongst us all. And that is paramount to the, the operation of, of, of good government. Is making sure you're comfortable and you're, you know, ready, willing and able to reach out to those who represent you. And I want to be that continued representative for Roy City. Thank you.
Again, thank you guys. They do deserve a round of applause. They're arrived. It's really hard to just throw yourself out there. Let them all look at everything that you've done in your life. A couple of things I need to mention. We are partnering with three other, four other organizations to do some of these debates so that we don't have 500 of them everywhere. Volver Way Forward, Women's Work, Ogden Branch of NAACP, and the Mormon Women for Ethical Government are also, they're partnering with us on doing, getting these done. And those are wonderful organizations and they're all nonpartisan. So check them out. There's also going to be, and I hope you all got it, a card that you will get. You can get it down at Farmers Market or you can get, you can look online. If you go to votefor11.org, put in your address and it will pull up your candidates that are running for your address. And they all got a link. And there's some questions and we tried to target some of them with reference to Roy. And you can read what their answers are. No answers tells me a lot. So I would encourage you to find that little link and get that answered. And I have no idea where Sharon is. I've got no comments for why she wouldn't be here, so. Is what? Did she? That's my caller. She called. So that tells me things too. So pick, pick, pick candidates that are going to make you proud and make Roy a better place to live. Don't vote for parties. This is nonpartisan. We don't care what party you are. Try to find a candidate that is in line with what you'd like to see. Thank you again for coming. Watch, oh.
I have a question for the general group. A one-minute seems a little awkward, a little tight, a little frustration in me listening and, and the presenting. I'm wondering, of the group of us, would we prefer to go to a minute and a half?
You don't get, you don't get to decide that, sorry. There's a reason.
What if we decide that we like a minute and a half?
Excuse me, we have another session coming up.
We have to do exactly the same thing every single meeting. And there's a reason for a minute. You need to get your thoughts out there. You need to be prepared to be able to answer questions if you're in these roles. So, and you need to be able to get to the point. So it is what it is. We do that on purpose. In the final round, we will probably go with a minute and a half because we have less candidates. But there's a reason. Yes.
When will we, when will we, when will we be able to hear them again?
If you go on Facebook to Weaver County League of Women Voters, we livestreamed it. Now, sometimes we have a hard time with sound, but it sounds like the mics are working much better. It's on there. And I will send a Zoom link to all of them. We'll let you be able to just hit the button and you can keep watching.
When and where will we be able to hear them speak again?
Oh, after the general, after the primary. And it won't be here. I will find you a place in Roy if I have to lay in the street, beg.
So ballots will drop Tuesday of next week. So, and then we'll go through a general, excuse me, primary, and then go into the general. So, and you guys are doing another one for the general, correct?
Yes, we will do and we will add.
Stacy, I thought I had this for the last.
Well, we're going to do mayors and councils together in all the cities because we have lots of people running, which is awesome. And it'll just be the people who are left from the primaries. And I'm going to try to get it so it's two weeks. They, they sent the ballots out three weeks prior. I try to get it so that the last debate, you don't have to validate. So that you can have an opportunity to be able to hear people. And I try to stick to Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday because we all know that, you know, Mondays are not good days for everybody. So, but I, you'll see, but it will be, I, my guess would be set general. That'll start in probably the first or second week. Okay, I don't have to repeat myself because I do believe that most of you were here before. So we will do the same format. It's two minutes to start. And tell everything that you want to tell us about yourself. A minute per question and then a minute and a half to wrap it up. We will ask different questions. It may be summed up, but maybe on the same type of topic. But they are different questions. Okay, let's get started. We'll start down there at the end, Rebel. Two minutes, tell us all about yourself.
Well, my name is Rebel Brooks. And it's not just my name, it's also who I am. It's a spirit I've had in me for as long as I can remember. I, I have this want to stand up for what I believe is right and fight for what I think is the correct thing to do. Case in point, back in the day, I was taken a position as a maintenance manager. And the previous maintenance manager had a guy named Shane. And when they described to me this gentleman, they called him a trash bag. He was nothing more than a person who could clean up trash. I was appalled, so I went and talked to Shane. And I, I got to know him over a couple of days. And I realized that he just never had a chance. The guy didn't want to train him because he didn't want him to get big or didn't want him to eclipse him or take his position. And I think you should do the exact opposite. I think we should all try and help everybody be as good as we can. So I heard corporate was coming to fire him and I met with him in the office because of the reputation from before. And I said, no, you're, you're not going to fire him. You have to have a real reason. And I'm taking him under my wing and I'm taking responsibility for him. Within a year, he became the top tech and the gentleman then labeled him as a trash bag, wrote him a letter of apology and sent it to the corporate that he worked for and told him he was the best tech in the company. So I, I take that as something good. And I think that's the same thing we should do with the city. It's not a bad city. It's just a city that we need to stand up for and make sure that we do what's best for and helping Roy become the best city. And that takes us fighting for it.
Well, thanks for that. My name's Anthony Dick. I go by Tony with most of my good friends. First of all, it's a, it's a pleasure to be here. I'd like to thank the, our hosts, our hosts for putting this on. A little bit about myself, I am, I'm not an original Roy person. My wife is. She's definitely my better half. I've lived in Roy now since 2002. I've taught at Roy High School since just before then. So I have 20-plus years of working with students and parents and stakeholders of this community. I have a real emotional and personal investment here. My oldest just graduated from, from college. He's going to be moving up to, well, he's going to go to Utah State in a while. One of the things we've talked about with him is where he wants to live, what he wants to do. One of my primary things is to be a city councilman who's a public servant. City councilman or servant, servants. It's one of my goals. I want to serve. And it's a time in my life I can. I see lots of issues and I hope we'll be able to address those as the time goes on tonight. I like a lot of people, or I like a lot of peoples here are, are open books. It's difficult to convey in a minute what we can, what we feel on things. I would encourage you, if I don't satisfactorily answer things for you tonight, give me a phone call. 801-564-2459. My email's online. I'm on Facebook, although I do admit I'm not on there very often. I send you a little bit more contentious than I like. Overall principles, I believe in small government. I believe the government shouldn't be doing a lot of things that are competing with other entities. I refuse to believe that the only way to fund something is to raise some taxes. And I believe that there is a very wise and smart population in the city of Roy that working together, we can solve every problem that we have.
Good evening. I'm Anna Graff and I'm delighted to be here with all of you. If you've had a conversation with me, you've probably already figured out I'm a bit of a nerd whether it comes to science, science fiction, especially Star Wars, or native plants. Pretty much anything that catches my interest is something that I will happily go on and on and talk about. Policy and code and the way that governance works on multiple scales is one of my passions as well. I started civic engagement at a pretty young age, 4H. Got to work in 4H both as a youth and then as a leader as well. At 17, I had an opportunity to run our county museum and that was my intro into community involvement on that level. I did grow up in southern Idaho, so that was Twin Falls County that I'm referencing there. Being involved in city council meetings, going to allotment committee meetings, getting to hear how our budget worked. What is the deciding factors between different programs receiving funding and such? In all of that, I was able to work in a position with the county extension office. And it was kind of a hub for different programs and, and different groups. And we primarily worked with horticulture, aquaculture, family and life sciences, youth development, 4H. But through that, we worked very closely with our county commissioners and I managed some of our reporting at the end of each year and was able to work with our budget. And that, that brought a lot of insight about the workings of governance and the, not necessarily supply and demand, but when you have all of these different programs, different enrichment opportunities, how do you decide with your limited budget where the money goes? My dedication to public service isn't just professional, it's deeply personal as well. And I'm excited to bring much more.
Thank you. Janelle?
Sorry, before I start, I was wondering after we're done if we could move now so that we can, because they're sharing a mic and so.
It's easy. Just go ahead and switch down one.
Sorry, I just wanted them to not have to deal with that.
Okay. My name is Janelle Holber and I'm running for Roy City Council. My family's lived in Roy for about 15 years. My husband and I are raising our four children here. We love this community. Over the years, I've become deeply involved in local schools, civic efforts and community groups, not just because I enjoy it, which I do, but because I believe in being part of the solution. About four years ago, our family faced a terrifying experience. One morning, our young son, who was nonverbal at the time, was left alone on a locked bus for hours because the driver failed to check for remaining students. It was devastating for our family and had repercussions for my child. We pushed for answers and accountability, but at many turns, it felt like no one was really listening. Until I reached out to our state legislator and he said, I think we can do something about that. Together, we worked on a no-cost solution and added accountability and protections. The bill passed the House and Senate and I saw firsthand that change is possible when people come together with purpose and determination. That moment sparked something in me. I began to get even more involved. I served, I've served on the Roy Planning Commission, participated in PTAs, helped the school community councils, built connections with local and state leaders, been a scout leader and served on the Roy Business Advisory Board. I've worked with local youth programs and neighborhood groups as well. And I believe that I'm, well, I'm running for, sorry. I built the, because of that thing, I've built many, many relationships with dozens and dozens of people across our city. Parents, seniors, small business owners, our youth and our families. It's been a great, one of the great privileges of my life to get to know so many of you and learn from you. I'm running for city council because I I'm running for city council because I believe in thoughtful growth, strong neighborhoods, and making sure all voices in Roy are heard. I love the city and I want to honor its past or traditions while helping plan a strong, connected future. Thank you so much.
Hello, I'm Diane Wilson. I've been a resident of Roy for 42 years and I wanted to thank Terry and your team for facilitating this because this takes a lot of work and effort and what an opportunity for the citizens of Roy to be able to participate in here and understand this. Some people may know me as Dr. Wilson as I've been a family physician practicing in Roy for 25 years. I have a very supportive husband, Leon, and he is a lifelong resident of Roy. We've had a peach orchard in Roy for 40 years. We enjoy music and we've performed locally, regionally, and internationally. We enjoy horseback riding and camping. Service and continuing education are priorities in our lives. We've had opportunities because of that. I've also had many opportunities in public service, certainly supporting different groups and candidates over the years, community and county and university boards, currently on several boards. But I think one of the most important aspects of my service is that of being on the city council. I think a key strength for me is my experience being on the council. I've served for over four years on the council and there's more to this job than meets the eye. I study extensively and I meet weekly with staff to understand city, state, and federal regulations and laws. City business takes priority in my life. I am currently mayor pro temp. And I believe it's imperative that candidates prioritize involvement in the city, especially attending city council meetings, to more fully understand the full scope of city matters and not limit focus to one or so areas of concern. City government should provide essential services, create an atmosphere of community involvement. Roy's very lucky that way. Allow citizens success by providing a non-restrictive environment, lessening government overreach, being respectful of citizens' finances. I am committed to listen, 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 research, study issues, and follow through. Thank you for your support to allow me that privilege.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start with Dick. Okay. Is that right? Tony.
Mr. Dick. Mr. Dick's what most people call me during the day.
Okay. It was mentioned previously in the other forum that Roy has a look of blight. What kind of plans do you have to make that blight go away?
That's a great question. I drive through Roy as a driver's ed instructor, so there's very few roads I haven't actually been on in the last week. I see some of that, that what you would call blight, but I also see some wonderfully, incredibly beautiful homes and neighborhoods. I think first and foremost, you need to build and preserve pride in your city. And that deals by involving the citizenship more, both in decisions that are made politically, but also in simple things like ordinances and ordinances enforcement. Ordinance enforcement is another way we could approach that. It's a little bit heavy-handed, but ultimately, we need to, as a community, sit down and collaborate with one another and decide what do we want to see? What are we willing to put into it in terms of involving ourselves and our neighbors? And then ultimately, are we involved to get a little heavy-handed with things that we
Regarding the look of blight, I think, just as you said, that's not just a visual aspect of our community. This is fostering pride and involvement, fostering a sense of ownership in our community. An informed community is an involved community. And an involved community takes a certain amount of ownership in that as well. Personally, if we're talking about blight as a literal, I am looking forward to fostering connections with programs to come in and help with water-wise gardening, to help with fire-wise gardening, to help with low-maintenance gardening, master gardeners, University of Utah Extension, resources that don't cost the city, but will help to encourage a flourishing and beautification of our city. Education about native plants. In regards to enforcement, education first with connection to those resources before bringing down enforcement when it's needed.
Thanks. I think when they were talking about blight, I think they were referring mostly to our downtown area. And I believe that, you know, we have a lot of businesses along there. Some are not full, some are empty. So, obviously, when we're working, trying to bring business here, that would help the situation. And I have an idea of how to help our businesses feel more part of our community and feel appreciated as well. And that would be to hold a networking type of meeting each month at the, at the city and to begin hosting that, but that could be turned over to the businesses eventually that they could host that. And that would bring city leaders and business leaders together monthly to get to know each other, trust each other, and help each other focus on those needs. So, then we could find out, like, why, like, what can we do to support you in making our main street look better?
Blight is unfortunately a problem that's spreading more than just in the city of Roy. And I think one of the most important parts is getting citizen involvement and part of that is with volunteers. I believe that volunteers are essential in many aspects of city in regards to life, in regards to government. Blight can often reflect other concerns or personal challenges of the people that live there. One of the programs that we have started, which has improved some of the interest, is the yard of the month. And it's nice to have people interested in trying to improve their yards for that. I believe code enforcement should be used as a positive education because many people don't know what the restrictions are. And so, if we can do an education and then we can have participation with that volunteers and have that ownership, I believe we help build that community cohesiveness that is what Roy is known for and we want to make sure we continue to promote. I believe there are several ways that we can work on this and I think it can be beneficial for the city.
Blight, yikes. That's not the word I would choose, but I see the potential in it, just like I did with Shane. There's a ton to do and there's a lot that we can do as a city. But there's also some responsibility on the property owner. The property owner is the one that's leasing, who's determining what kind of business can go in there. And they're the ones that aren't enforcing somebody to clean it up. I think we need to talk with some of them, see what we can do about getting businesses in the spots that they have, see if we can help them figure out a solution to that. And then how we can make it more appealing. There's got to be something, they're going to benefit by doing that because they'll be able to fill the rest of their empty spots. And we can do that as a city without having to raise taxes or do anything. I also like the volunteer idea because we're a city. We come together really well. I think we can step in there and help as well.
I forgot to mention, she's going to point to the person that's going to start next because it is way hard to keep track of that. How important is ethics in your role as a city council member?
I would say that ethics is fundamental to the role of a city council member. We have a responsibility to our community to not only give information to our community, to then make decisions that are informed by what our community needs, what our community wants. We hold a lot of responsibility when we make decisions for other people. And ethics is at the center of that. Integrity, that is fundamental to our role as a city council member, to showing honesty and transparency in that communication and setting ourselves up as someone to be trusted with those voices and to act according to what those voices need and what's best for the community.
So, when I attended university, one of my classes was on ethics because I studied communication and that was one of the requirements is you needed to learn about copyright and all those different things. And something we talked about is, you know, ethics isn't just following the law, it's going beyond that. And so, there may be the law, but then going beyond and doing the thing that's right is the ethical thing to do. And so, I think that ethics is a very important part of this. I know that when we signed up to be candidates, we were given the choice to sign an ethics agreement, I guess. I'm not sure exactly what it was called. And they talked about, you know, that we won't slander other candidates and we won't do things like that. And I think that that's really important too because I think, like, if you're elected to the city council, I think it's very important that you're respectful to the other members and treat them with dignity. I don't know if you've heard of the dignity index. It's something that you can look up online.
Oh, is that time? Is that everyone's time, sir?
Of course, ethics is absolutely critical and crucial as noted. I think there's a really important saying that just because it's legal doesn't make it right. And because ethics is part of that personal integrity that we must have inside of us, we must have it innately as part of us. I work in the field of medicine. Ethics is absolutely critical and crucial in that. And because of that, every day, every patient, we work with those principles. When we talk about ethics, we're talking about things that are broader than just ourselves as well. We need to hold true to principles. We need to have developed, studied, and resolved what our principles are going to be. And then we need to take that next step forward and spread it out. And so, as part of city government, it has to be there during meetings and it has to be there during your life. It has to be there when you're meeting with your neighbors and with your citizens. Ethics definitely is an overriding key component of all.
Ethics in the city council isn't just critical and it shouldn't start there and end there. It should be who we are all the time. When you meet me on the street, I'm the exact same. I'm dressed the same, I talk the same. I'm me and I'm not going to change. And when I'm on the council, I'm not going to change then. I'm going to make sure you guys know exactly what's going on and I'm going to make sure I know exactly what's going on, that there's nothing not revealed, there's nothing not protected. My business in Roy, where I live, is named integrity. So, I think that's a standard that everybody should live up to on the council and off the council.
Just like everyone else here, ethics is critical. It boils down to trust. So, as a city council, we demand, well, the citizenry needs to be able to trust us, stakeholders, households, businesses. To generate that trust, I think a critical part of that ethics is a vibrant and aggressive communication. And that's something I would love to see, and I have some ideas of spearheading things, community partnerships, individuals that we put with their pure responsibility of encouraging communication, getting information out there. The more educated our population is, whether it's parents, kids, business owners, developers coming in, the more educated and the more information they have, the higher ethics threshold they can demand because they have all that information. It goes beyond, like was just stated here, it goes beyond just following the law. It goes back to generating a sense of trust in all the stakeholders.
Okay. How do you plan to engage youth, seniors, renters, house owners, immigrants, how, different sections of population that you have in Roy?
Well, first, I think diversity is a huge asset to our community. I've seen, I've served as the PTS president at Sandwich Junior High and that can be a difficult age for a lot of kids. But I saw lots and lots of potential and so many kids want to be involved. And I think that we can allow them to be. I know that we do some things already, like we do our day of service, that youth and people from all over the city come and do that. But I think that, looking for opportunities, you know, we have the communities that care here that we could reach out to. They have a youth council. We have a youth council that can come to the city council regularly if they wish. And we have all kinds of opportunities. And seniors, I've actually signed up, I'm signing up to volunteer at the seniors' center, I think, starting in September, so that I can understand their needs and everything. And I think that going to them and knowing their needs is the important part.
Engaging all of those different groups are absolutely part of improving the community cohesiveness that we have. One of the most important things is being able to go where they're at. So, for example, if there are different functions, then it's nice to be involved and participate in those. I believe that reaching out in regards to issues that might relate to them. Oftentimes, I've made up my own flyers. I've walked around the streets and handed out flyers so people would know what was coming up so they could be involved. Making phone calls is important. Knowing that they can trust the people, knowing they can trust the city council, being part of the different opportunities that are there. We have schools, but one of the most important things, and I know the complex will probably come at some point in time, but that's one of the most important reasons to have the complexes, so you can have growth and engagement in a positive way. There have been studies that have shown that and that might come up in some other way. But there are different policies, taxes and everything that present. Being part of all of that includes.
I think we've got to start finding more creative ways to get out there. Everything that's been mentioned, great ideas, but have a weekly thing with the school. Have a weekly thing with retirement community. That wouldn't be cost prohibitive at all. We can do for free, we can post up on YouTube for the city. Have a link on the website, right on the city page, that can take you to the council meetings, tell you about new ones. Have interviews with anybody on the council, whatever it is you want, you can have a link right on the page for the city. You can go and put it in the weekly school newsletter. Whatever you, whatever you think about, it can be done. It can be done relatively cheap, especially in this modern age. You can send out texts letting them know when the council meetings are, some of the points that are going to be discussed, some of the upcoming referendums. There's so much available to us for no cost. Let's take advantage of it.
Engaging with somebody on a one-to-one basis is fairly easy. And I'll be honest, all the city council members that I've ever encountered are willing to talk to me and willing to talk through things. But engagement comes first from listening. I don't claim to know everything. In fact, I claim to know very little, but I can listen, I can learn. Engaging youth, engaging those different stakeholders, I'm going to be a little bit of an echoing chamber. We need to go where they are. Little bit of a background, one of the reasons I haven't run for city council or been engaged on a person-to-person basis in that meeting is for the last 20 years, I've worked every single Tuesday night teaching mathematics at the technical college. We need to find more creative ways, whether it be through social media, alternative meetings, extra meeting times, making ourselves a little more accessible. Because once somebody feels like that you're listening to them, you're hearing them, whether or not you agree with what they say or you come to their final conclusion, they will be more engaged.
I love everything that was just said there, so I'm going to try not to copy it word-for-word here. But cultivating opportunities and events where, yes, we have all of these resources and all this information that people can go and find, but it sends a different message when somebody comes and brings that to you, especially if you are a part of a group that has been passed over for some of this in the past or has not felt centered or as focused in decisions or in opportunities that have been made before. So, promoting volunteer opportunities, involvement, but also engaging with our different communities, with our different groups, facilitating and creating those programs that are centered for them, to tell them that they are heard, that they are seen, and that here in Roy, they belong and they matter and they have a voice too.
How do you envision what needs to be changed in the Roy city? What's one thing you think needs to be focused on first?
If you're going to ask me, you know, what's some of the most important principles are, I think I will, we can certainly talk about that. You know, I think those most important principles for me would be revenue, absolutely very important. But I think what I'd like to focus on this particular question is my second comment, if I were to pick three, as you mentioned in the last council. And that would be citizen education and investment. Because if they're involved, they're going to have, when you have involvement, you have ownership. And then we, as a city council, know what they are interested in. I have had a wonderful opportunity serving on the city council, being able to engage with individuals as well as groups. Town halls have been one of my favorite events because we get a wide perspective there. Number one is representing the citizens, and we need to hear from them.
The first thing I think I change is I want to find a way to ease the burden on the property owners. It's hard, everybody wants to, but I think we need to dig deep and find some alternate ways to bring in money, whether that's, and it won't be popular, but whether that's having the police give more tickets, whether that's increasing the cost of a business license. I do business right here, and I'm willing to pay $75 a year more, which will save two people's property taxes from going up. If everybody could do that, does a business owner, that's not going to make or break any business in that city. And it would ease the burden on taxpayers. Have incremental property taxes on buildings above two stories. Then if you ever do get a taller building, you're actually getting interest rate off of that. You're getting an incremental increase off the property tax on them instead of the property owners.
A lot of good ideas have been put here recently. I love the idea of looking for extra revenue sources. Right now, let's, the elephant broom is money. Budgets have been a huge concern the last couple of years, particularly when we're dealing with double-digit tax increases. We have to preserve the essentials. Then we have to start looking at what is non-essential, and how can we either better manage them, better fund them, or eliminate them to save the money. Now, along with that, I think the biggest thing that needs to change, that's all a little bit of a side issue, communication needs to be better between the citizenry and community council, between the mayor, between all of the involved parties. The council can't come up with all the good ideas. I'm not bright enough. Nobody here is. But collaboratively, we can come up with ways to balance budget, make good decisions, eliminate things that are wasteful or not needed, and make those changes.
My priority is the stability and long-term sustainability of Roy. And so it's a bit of an umbrella, but the budget, stabilizing our budget and our infrastructure, but at the same time, taking into account what is coming down the pipeline over the next 10 years. What is it going to look like in 10 years if we make a decision on a housing project or a road project or any other project that comes right now? Taking into account a wide, vast spectrum of people's experiences and difficulties and voices, and making sure that that is all taken into account, that as we're looking at our decisions right now, that we are looking at all aspects of it, that we are hearing all perspectives on it, even if it's one that we don't agree with. It may be what opens up a door for a direction that we hadn't considered that ends up being a point of flourishing for Roy. So that is, I think, what my main concern is, is our stability, long-term, and right now, for sustainable future.
I agree with that because I would like to stay in Roy a long time. I think that there is one idea that I've thought about that we could do to help our communication, because I agree, there's a lot of people that don't always know what's going on, and people are very busy nowadays, so they don't always have time to go to the meetings and things. And I think that that actually, the idea came from our general plan. Our general plan breaks up the neighborhoods in Roy into different neighborhoods and named to different things. And I think we could use that as a tool to have, you know, block parties or whatever, and the city council could go participate in those and hear directly from our residents. Because like I said, I think it's important that we go to where the residents are, because they don't always have time to come to the meetings that we have.
And we hear this over and over and over again. There is no affordable housing out there for people who are beginning, starting out. What kind of ideas do you think could be put in place that would make housing accessible to people that just beginning, you know, young people?
That's a tough question, because we've heard a lot of times, someone wants to come in and develop affordable housing, and then it turns around and it's not. We had some apartments go in Roy that were going to be affordable, and it comes back $4,000 a month for rent. Not in my book is that affordable. So we need to hold the developers more accountable, and we need to make sure that where we place it isn't in an area that has super expensive homes, because the property values there are going to impact that. So you have to be very, very picky on where you put it. You're going to have to be able to let them have some accommodations that are going to make it to where it can appeal to people who can't afford to own a home right now. Because that's, all of us have been there. All of us might be there again in Roy.
That's a great question, and as Rebel pointed out, you know, we have affordable houses that opened up that, what, were $400,000 plus? That's not affordable. It's obscene what my house is valued at now, and it's just, anyway. There's not one answer to that question. We've heard about tonight accessory dwelling units that now we're mandated by the states that we need to come up with policies and ordinances to do those. We have a high density and medium density and condominiums and all of these pieces. I truly believe that all of those pieces, that responsible growth play part in that. Those are all part of providing responsible, well, affordable housing. And as the city council, their role in that is to listen to the stakeholders and craft ordinances and policies within the city that don't stifle those affordable housing developments and that encourage responsible development there.
We have approximately 60 acres of developable land left in Roy. We are limited by our borders, we can't really expand out at this point. And I definitely agree, there's not a one solution answer, a one size fits all here. It's going to be diversified housing. We're going to have to look at opportunities for mixed use, for various density. The ADU option, touched on that. If our compliance isn't, we're needs to be between state and city, we either bring ourselves into compliance or make sure that at the state level, they know what our needs are, so that that's being taken into consideration in that state code. And that we can have our needs represented in that policymaking as well. But when it comes down to it, it is making sure that we are evaluating what the developers are bringing and that it is in the best interest of the residents of Roy now and moving forward.
So the other day, I was reading an article, and it said, I believe, that Utah is the ninth most expensive state to live in. And so we are facing a very real challenge, and I don't think there's an easy answer. I know that the state is trying to keep up with the demand, and they thought that that would hopefully solve some of the problem, but it doesn't seem to be solving the problem at this point, at least. But I actually think, I know ADUs have been talked about a lot, but I think that's actually a great solution to part of that problem, because if you have, you know, it's like if your mother-in-law needs to move in, or if you have a child that is going to college, but you don't really want them to live with you, or you want them to get out on their own and have those experiences, those are, that allows those options. And in Roy, though, I know that actually the, we don't have that many choices, like because of the ordinances and how small some of the plots are, that's not even a choice for some people. But I think just, yes, thanks.
Okay, if you could pick one type of business.
So we've had very many good ideas. There certainly is no easy answer, and there's not one. What I'd like to focus on is one component, which I believe is actually approachable. For true affordable housing, right now, it's going to either be a mobile home, actually, which people are getting rid of those. And so really, the next option is the ADUs or the internal ADUs. But one of the biggest problems with ADUs is parking ordinances. We have, we were involved in a group trying to discuss a request from citizens. They had five children. They needed to live in that home. They had no way to park because they couldn't park in the winter on their front. They had, and they couldn't park in the front lawn, and they couldn't park on the front side. Parking issues are something that we absolutely can address, and we've got to relax them to facilitate that.
Now can I go? Okay. What are your feelings about the roundabouts that are being put in?
Wow, I kind of have a unique perspective. Today, well, yesterday, I drove a dozen 15-year-old learner's permit drivers through two dozen Now granted, I don't own property on the roundabouts. My perspective is simply as a driver. I actually love the fact that they're traffic calming devices, and I'll use that term because that's the driver's ed version of it, and that they do facilitate traffic. I do look at some of them that have been input in, and primarily the ones that have been input have been on state roads, so they've been state projects. And I do know that the city can't demand the state just not do something, but we can encourage them to make decisions and responsible decisions by communicating with the owners roundabout there, so that they don't usurp property and property rights. That would be my community-level decision with that.
And making sure that the rights of those property owners are being taken into account and being considered. But also, as a driver's ed student, a little while ago, the defensive driving course that I took was focused on knowing the hazards and knowing how to reduce risk and things like the roundabouts. Having grown up where there were roundabouts in my, in my general area, they help with traffic, they help with the traffic flow, but they also help to mediate the speed of traffic. And it does bring a sense of safety as a mom to an 11-year-old who doesn't always pay attention to his surroundings. Those traffic devices that help to both control the flow of traffic and to make it more efficient. There's definitely benefits there, but they need to be balanced with the impact to those around them.
I personally love roundabouts. The one that put on 4,000, I think it's made the traffic move a lot better than having a stop sign, because I drive that every single day taking my kids to school, and it has definitely improved the situation there. I agree that property rights and space is actually the biggest concern I have with those, because sometimes they do have to cut into people's property. And so I think that working with those individuals is really important, and talking to them before a decision is made is a really important part of that.
Roundabouts certainly have disadvantages and advantages. I think several of those have been brought up. Certainly, the flow of traffic is excellent and the calming, traffic calming principles of that. However, there are some disadvantages. I was speaking with a traffic engineer three days ago, and one of the biggest concerns is people with any traffic calming device often will go there slowly, and then they rev up to get back up to speed. And so we currently in the city, right now, have several people complaining because of noise problems right after, right around those roundabouts. So I think part of the planning is important, that it's that they're done in the right areas and the right places, and then education is absolutely imperative. There is an era of drivers that have not had that in their driver's training, and so it doesn't help the flow of traffic at all when you have people that are educated. And so that may well be something that we could put in our newsletter or try to help with education.
I agree. I don't have particularly one way for or against roundabouts, but I have been with people who have not known how to negotiate them. And it is not fun. It is not fun. They're stopping, everybody's going, everybody's looking at them like, are you going to go? Like, is it a stop sign? No, it's not a stop sign. It's not an yield sign. It's a slowdown. It's a process. And sometimes it's hard for some of the generation my age to get around this sometimes, but I think as long as it doesn't make it less safe for people directly involved, whether it's going to take away their property rights or their safety by their kids having less yard or whatever, then go for it.
What types of businesses would you support coming in and being part of Roy?
I would love to see a flourishing arts community in Roy to help support that. I'm from a military family, and the first thing that I did when I found out that we were being transferred to this area was to look and see what community theaters were nearby, because that is a built-in community, and there are so many benefits. Theater matters. It brings enrichment, it brings empathy, it brings perspectives, it brings activities. And so I would really love to see a flourishing theater community in Roy. We have Ogden, we have Leighton, but there's nothing that is a community theater here for us, where we don't have to drive outside of our area. And I would love, absolutely love, to help facilitate something local for our community that we get to take pride in and participate in.
So first, I would like to say that I would like to better support the businesses we already have. I know that when I was on the business advisory board, I think, I don't know what the number is now, but at one time, we had 900 businesses in Roy, and I don't think people realize that. We have a lot of businesses in Roy that are licensed with us, and so I'd love to give more love to them. But also, I think, I mean, I'm open to almost any business, as long as it's, you know, lawful and appropriate. But I do love the idea of a restaurant, more sit-down restaurants that bring people in and a hotel. Oh, well, that's it, basically.
In regards to businesses, I agree with Janelle and everyone that any lawful, positive business, we certainly would like to encourage, and we've been trying to do that, unfortunately. We don't have that say. It's the developers and the business owners themselves. But one of the places I would like to focus is places that might help facilitate home businesses. We have regulations that sometimes are a little bit prohibitive of that. And so if we could do that, that would actually increase that community cohesiveness, because if we're working together. One of our best businesses are the grocery stores. Where else do you go to be able to interact so openly and freely with your neighbors? It's a great place. It's one of my favorite places to go is the grocery store. We're lucky to have several, but I think that's something that we want to support. Janelle has a very good idea, support the current businesses. As we support them, then I think other businesses will see that support, and it will draw them in. And a destination business would certainly be helpful and work towards obtaining that.
I'd like to see a business that is a destination location. I was talking to somebody last night at the meeting, and I mentioned that to him, and they're like, well, is that going to help us? Have you ever been to Farmington Station? So if we can get something that's not going to just appeal to everybody in Roy, but we can bring people from Riverdale, we can bring people from Ogden, the more people we bring from outside, the better our tax basis, and it makes us more of a destination place to live as well. So it's going to kind of help beat, you know, both of those things. So something big enough, not like the Fat Cats that has that little theater, because we all go to the bigger theaters. We like the more comfortable spaces. We need something that's going to appeal to the masses and bring people in.
One of the disadvantages, going last in this line, as everybody said everything, and it's difficult to come up with something unique. Let me start out with, I can't think of hardly any types of businesses that I would not welcome and encourage in Roy. I love to eat at restaurants. I love to watch things. I'd love anything like that would come in. I love to spend time with my kids. I love the ideas of trying to bring outside influences. But Diane really hit on something that I was gonna, I was hoping I was going to be a little unique on, so she stole my thunder. We think of businesses as storefronts, driving down 1900 or something. I dare say, just looking at the numbers, there are more businesses being run out of people's homes and garages and there than any storefronts. We need to encourage, both for storefront businesses and in-home businesses, less restrictive environments. If they're not abusing the property rights of those around them, we need to encourage all of those things to bring their business and bring those extra revenue dollars into the city of Roy.
I'm waiting for her to point at me. Okay, I'll say the nasty word. Roy Complex. It sounds like the public supports the Roy Complex. What are your ideas? What are your ideas to get it out of the red?
I also love the Roy Complex. I think it's a great asset. I've been there in the mornings. Our family all has passes there. I've been there in the mornings. It's very full in the mornings. The women's strengthening class is great. There's a lot of really strong seniors in our city, just so you know. And I think that, I think there are things that we can improve there. And I think that one of those things could be that maybe we get sponsorships or advertising there. And I know that that was brought up before as well. And I think that'd be a great thing. And maybe we work on the youth programs. I love that idea from Randy, like that we could make more uses out of that building, I believe.
In regards to the complex, I had heard it might come up during my tenure, and I was really concerned about that because it does cost a lot of money. And so I had it come up in my tenure, and I had to do a lot of research. Is it worth the money? Is it not? What should we do? Well, one of the most important things I found was that the study showed if you have an opportunity like that for your youth and your seniors, you actually lower the cost of the police that you need to use and you lower the cost of your fire department. Now, all of the Parks and Rec is a voluntary service that we have, and none of Parks and Rec makes money. But the complex and the aquatic centers do at least get some money in. I do believe there's room to improve it. In past, we've talked to the director about having banners, increasing fundraising. There are options. I do believe those need to continue. But one of the most important things is to be able to look at where it fits in. It isn't a moneymaker, but if we could surely decrease the expense, that's important. And there are no other surrounding services, I mean, businesses that provide those same services.
I agree. We need to listen to our citizens. We need to listen to our constituents. They want it. They like it, they love it, and it meets a need for a lot of people. And so we need to make sure that we can deliver on that. So then the question falls to, how do we pay for it? Because it's not cheap. So we don't take it out of the pocket of the taxpayer. So then we need to go back to those alternative ways of raising income, whether it's, like I mentioned before, more on business licenses, whether it's more on fees, which you can only do a little bit on, but you can still get some off of that, advertising. Whatever it is, we need to find a way to make sure our citizens are happy. And I think there's benefits that come with not just keeping them happy, but keeping the complex there, if that's what we want.
Let me just start with, in general, any non-essential service the city provides should come, I believe, as close to paying for itself as possible. Sometimes that's impossible. I'm not going to sit and charge people admission every time they want to use a playground. But where the complex and the aquatic center are both revenue generating, at least to a degree, not to cover all their costs, we can work with things like that. So when we're looking at those kinds of services, complex specifically, I think we need to look at management. Are there things we can do to encourage usership? Because that would also increase revenue. Do we need to increase a per-user cost? That's been done at the aquatic center. Those prices have doubled in the last six, seven years. The complex doesn't seem to proportionally have taken up the same thing. I think through increased user costs, increased usership, and better management and more community events, we can solve that problem.
When my youth development program had to go before our commissioners back up in Idaho, WAC, we talked about that broader picture of there's going to be funding directed somewhere, and we can either fund on this side with our youth with giving them this healthy area for them to develop themselves, or we're looking at extra funding in our police force or in our jails later. So where do we want to do that? And I believe that we need to be proactive. With that being said, if we have an area of our budget that is continually in the red, we've got to look at how to tighten that up and help that and make it more sustainable and self-sustaining in that process. I love the idea of multi-use, expanding the use of the building, bringing in programming from outside our city budget. Again, that extension office, that youth programming, they would love to have a place that is set up where they can bring in a program that is funded through their grants, enrich the community, gather feedback from that, and be able to take that back, that research back. If we're going to cut something, we need to have something that we are replacing it with before we even get to the point of talking about it.
It was brought up that there is some contention or two different sides on the council. How do you plan to work together to be able to have a cohesive unit?
Interestingly enough, that is my third, that would have been my third point, is to be able to improve the council collaboration. And I think that's actually already on the rise. We have had some excellent opportunities to work as two, because it is legal for two council, and I think it is very productive. And if you can rotate the two, because that's where you can have that openness of ideas, you can have that collaboration. You can meet with the manager, or you can meet with the mayor. And it opens up opportunities that you would not otherwise be able to see. There's a lot of information that goes on at a city council, but it's difficult to do the brainstorming that really needs to be done. And work sessions are certainly very important, too. I think as we increase work sessions, that's very helpful. As we increase town halls, that helps because then all of us as a council know what our citizens want. So I believe that it's already on the rise. We're already doing that. But that important brain and, you know, brain flex and brainstorming is important.
I think it's imperative that you can work together. And I think that we all have the capability to do it. We all have jobs, right? A lot of us have management jobs in order with other managers. We all find a way to do that every single day. We're all in communities, we're all in groups, and we all find ways to work together. The more ideas you can bring, not one person has the exact same ideas as anybody else in town, not one. And yet, we all come together and elect our city council. We elect our every single elected official because we've got to find a way to work together and get as many ideas together as we can, figure out the one that's going to appeal to the most so that we can help the most. That's going to take all of us to be willing to listen and cooperate.
I want to be complimentary of our current council. I agree with Diane. That has seen improvement in that in the last several years. And I just lost my train of thought. I apologize. I think it starts with gathering information. As a teacher, as a parent, I'm very data-oriented. I want to get all the information, all the numbers, all the opinions that I can before I ever make a decision. And I have absolutely no qualms about saying, "I don't know enough to make a decision, and therefore I'd like to postpone those kinds of things." Gather the information and then collaboratively look at that information together and put my ego aside, put their ego aside. And I think we can come together and do what's best for the community. Whether or not I agree with that personally is a moot issue. It comes back to gathering information, looking at the data, and deciding between you all what is best after using, having all available information or ideas there.
That collaboration comes first and foremost from listening, from gathering those voices and from taking all of them into account. And if we are able to open up those avenues of discussion, whether that's with town halls and advisory committee, just sitting here tonight, there have been so many ideas, so many options that have come up. And even last night in the meet and greet and hearing over into tonight, there's a spirit of collaboration right here, and there's so much that can be brought with those ideas. And that's just five people. If we are able to open up those avenues and harvest and gather your input, the input of the rest of the city, and then to take that and to center the needs, the voices, the data, and let that direct, it decentralizes the individuals making the decision and helps to put that focus back on why we are here, what we are supposed to do. And I think that that is what will foster a spirit of collaboration and get through some really rocky roads.
I think collaboration and mutual respect is key to solving our problems in Roy. I think that is what is going to get our problems solved. A few examples of that. I'm on the planning commission, and one of my very favorite things that we've done is hammerhead, a hammerhead option in a driveway that you can back out easier if you're on a busy road, like 4,000. That's a really busy road. So if you live on that road, you have that option. I love that. And that came from collaboration with the council, some of the council members and us. And then when I was a PTA president, I met with our principal every single week, and that made collaboration between the parents and the students and the teachers. Teachers would even come to me, and I'd say, "Hey, you know, your teachers aren't liking this," or whatever. And so we collaborated together to solve problems. And I think that that is key to solving problems.
Okay, how would you hold yourself accountable as a viable city council member?
The same way I think any of us should every single day. We have families, we have friends, we have ourselves. We have mirrors in our homes. And we need to be able to sleep at night. I think that every single person should not just be accountable privately, but put it out there. I'm an absolute open book. If my phone number is listed, my address is listed, I'm a state delegate, and it was listed then, too. I'm completely willing to let anybody check on me anytime. You can ask. And if you have a hard question or if you have an accusation that hurt, come talk to me. I'm more than one to hear it.
A few things I can guarantee, no matter what. I can listen, and I can listen, and I can listen, and I can learn. I can change my opinion, and I can make decisions with integrity. That's where it starts. I love Rebel's point of communication is the key there. Accountability comes from transparency and two-way communication. Communicate to people both privately and publicly, be honest about what I'm doing, and encourage those hard conversations. Nobody should look at me and not be willing to ask a hard question. I should not be, I should always be willing to give a hard answer, even if I know they're not going to like it. We need to be able to keep those methods of communication open. And like Rebel next to me, it's no secret. Anybody in the room can find out where any of us live and what we're doing and contacts at any time. And that's the thing. City councilmen are so accessible. We need to use that.
Accessible communication. You can reach us, we're here. After last night's meet and greet, I woke up this morning to over 12 emails where I had told a lot of people last night, "If you have questions about my policies, my stances, reach out to me." And it's my responsibility to respond because they have put that trust in me now that I am willing to respond to those questions, and I'm going to tell them what I think. And I need to give them an answer that is not wishy-washy, but actually is my first form of commitment to that person as an individual of what I would be like as someone making decisions for our community. I have a kitchen cabinet of a wide spectrum of viewpoints, perspectives, people that I know I do not hold the same values or decision-making points. And they are the people that I go to even throughout this process of running a campaign. And like, can you check me on this? What is your response to this? What am I missing? And being humble enough and having the integrity to reach out and be willing to hear the hard things and to hold myself accountable through that.
I think what everybody's kind of alluded to is, yes, we expect our citizens to keep us accountable as part of it. I also know that my children will keep me accountable because they already do that in everything I do, especially my nine-year-old. He's happy to tell me everything I'm doing wrong. So I think that, but for real, though, they do watch what I'm doing, and I want to be a good example to them. And then I also think, just, you know, I've talked with the heads of departments throughout our city. I have two more to visit, but I think they also help us stay accountable. They help us follow the law. They help us know realistic choices and things like that. And so I think being, listening to them as well is part of that.
Being self-accountable is absolutely one of the number-one principles that we need to live in, live with as a city council member. City council has got to be our priority when we're in city council. We'll have other things that will be important to us, but that has got to be it. Number one for me is representing the citizens. If I know that I'm representing the citizens, that will help me be accountable. I must have integrity, no matter where I'm at and no matter who is watching. I have to have a significant core principles that I maintain. I want to make sure I'm speaking with citizens and listening to them, engage with them, reach out to them because they may not always come to us. Must be very open. The research is so important here because there are pros and cons to everything, and then there are unintended consequences. And as we do that research, we speak with the staff, but we also speak with outside professionals so we can come in with information. That due diligence is critical. We need to put the time in to be self-accountable. We need to have city council as a priority.
I was waiting for one more. We're going to wrap it up. You have one and a half minutes to tell us how wonderful you are and why we should pick you, starting with Tony.
Well, I think you just said it. I'm wonderful, therefore you should vote for me. But that's not enough. My wife doesn't even think that. You should vote for me if my values and principles align with what you're wanting to see. That could be said with all of us. There's not an individual here that I wouldn't love to have representing me. Some things that I can guarantee, and I've said it before, I can listen, I can learn, I can make decisions with that integrity. I want to focus on saving, not spending. That's something that's come up in conversation time after time after time is we can't and we don't, as city government, have an open pocketbook to look at things. We need to be responsible with our ordinance development and the entire vision of the plan. In the previous session, the question was asked, something about how often or how important is the general plan? If you don't have a general plan that reaches far in the future, you're just being responsive rather than proactive. My priority, I'm going to read a little bit, just straight off here in the last few seconds. My priorities reflect my background and values, limiting government to what our community truly needs, strengthening our infrastructure and public safety. That has to be our number one. Promoting transparency through open communication, making fiscally responsible decisions. I'm committed to including all voices and gathering aggressively those voices, families, businesses, civic leaders, to ensure Roy grows while keeping what has made it a wonderful place to live.
When I moved to Utah, it took less than a year for me to realize that this is where we wanted to put down roots. We started looking in the areas around the base and found Roy, and that's where we wanted to be. So we moved off base and settled here. I got involved with the legislative sessions and started watching our county commissioner, our city council, and our planning commission meetings. And oh my gosh, planning commission, y'all, those details brings me joy. Policy, all of those details. And as I had some health issues that wrapped up and were able to figure out what was going on, I've been able to be more involved, be more boots on the ground. And I'm excited to bring a vast array of skills and experiences and perspectives to help stabilize Roy's sustainable flourishing future. And I want to make sure that I am acting as a bridge both for communication from city council to the citizens, to all of these different voices, perspectives, and experiences, but also going out and being diligent in meeting and bringing those voices and amplifying, especially the voices that haven't had necessarily the same accessibility because of whatever reason in their life, to be able to be involved. I was a single mom. I didn't have the freedom to go in person all the time. I could listen on YouTube or something like that. But finding those ways to make sure that our entire community is represented and considered and a part of those decisions because that's what our decisions are for. It is for our community and for our future.
First, I want to say thanks for the opportunity to come here tonight and thank you to everybody that attended. And I appreciate that the league does this all the time. I think it's a very important thing. I know that we all have different seasons and stages of life, and I'm finally in one that I'm able to volunteer much more in my life because all my kids are in school, which has been fabulous. And I believe that I can bring a fresh perspective to our... And I believe that I can bring a fresh perspective to our council with kids in all different age groups in our schools and community. And I believe that I will show up, I guess is what I'm saying. I'll be there. I'll be at the things. I'll be showing up. Because I think that's how we know what's going on in our community. I'll come to you. I'll come to the things, and I'll definitely show up. That's something that's really important to me. And I also want to say I'm more than happy to talk to anyone. I love talking. My kids call me "outmaster," so please reach out.
I would like to second Janelle. Thank you very much for providing this opportunity for us. Thank you to the league and your cohorts that are with that. And I'd like to thank all of you for attending. This certainly wasn't as easy and convenient as hopefully it will be another time. And I am very pleased to see how many candidates we have for this. Just that concept of more involvement is so important. The effort that's been put into that, the ideas, this is what we need. This collaboration is what we need as not just part of an election, but as we continue throughout the years, as things go through. I would like to say what sets me apart, I believe, is my past forward plus years of dedicated experience. You have no idea how much there really is to learn, things that seem to make so much sense. Once you get involved with state law, a city law, or a federal law, it no longer makes sense. And so that education has been so absolutely important for me, and I appreciate all those that have helped. I'm currently serving as mayor pro temp, and that's been a very good opportunity for me. Again, I will say my number-one focus is representing the citizens of Roy, and serving them will be my priority. I'll foster a team approach amongst council members as well as staff. I am personally very frugal, financially responsible, and conservative. These characteristics are very important, especially when dealing with city monies and services. We must have fiscal restraint. Education of self and citizens is going to be a focus, promoting volunteer interest. I want you to know I am committed to listen, research, analyze, and follow through. Thank you for supporting me and allowing me the privilege to continue as a city council member.
We all can brag. We all can stand here pat ourselves on the back. But we should be doing it with the people who arranged this and everybody up here for having the courage to stand against the slings and arrows. And everybody up here thinks they have new ideas or good ideas. Everybody up here thinks that they deserve to be here, or none of us would be. And I'm glad that we all are taking that opportunity to let you guys see it. My whole point is we should all work together. And I think with my fighting spirit, we can make sure that we listen more to the community instead of some people that are outside influences on that community. I think it's important to make sure that the things that affect us day to day in our city, where I live, I work, and I have a business, that they're being catered to more than outside interests. They're coming in and trying to change who we are as a community. We're a great community. We're a strong community. And I think that we need somebody to fight to maintain that and to help us grow and be the city we want to be and deserve to be.
Okay, thank you. Again, same thing. This is very hard to do for most, well, it would be for me, but, so I would assume it would be for most people, to put yourself right out there. So they deserve a round of applause for daring to do that. And make sure you tell people, "Vote, vote, vote." They have to vote, or none of these people will be in office. Thank you so much, Bryce.